We had our own visual cameras for people.
We're the dream, we're the dream making team this year. Make other people's dreams. There you go. Six twenty-nine? I was, I wonder if the lady talks.
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Okay, now that we got approval from the computer, we're gonna start this evening's meeting. All right, I'd like to welcome everyone. It is now Thursday night, believe it or not, November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, six thirty P. M. I'd like to welcome, not only welcome everyone to tonight's Village Council meeting, but we're having our first Village Council meeting in our new Village Hall. Let's give a clap to this wonderful place. Will everyone stand and please join us in a pledge of allegiance? Okay, Diane, would you please let the record show that all members of council are present this evening?
Yes, Mayor, I will.
And with that, I think we're gonna start out with reports. Why don't we start with you, Selena?
Good evening, everyone. It seems so much further away, though. That's the only thing. Quite a bit going on. So with the Village Royal Palm Beach, our youth basketball season has started, and that's K through eight, and we have over two hundred and fifty participants. The Young at Heart Club, the Young at Heart group has started to meet, and they have two hundred and seventy-five members, and they had a great entertainer the beginning of the month, so we had lots of singing and dancing going on. Tomorrow at Commons Park, we have Lincoln Park Tribute Band playing, and then on Saturday in Contu, the movie. Saturday, December second, is our annual Winter Fest from one to nine. That's over at Commons Park. It is free, so we have the Kids Zone, snow slides, craft vendors, fireworks, and of course, Santa and Mrs. Claus. The other thing that we're doing new this year is that we're doing the meet and greet, so it's twice you can see Santa on a Saturday, on December ninth and December sixteenth, from nine, from five to nine over the Cultural Center. And then, since we're now over here, Village Hall, the old Village Hall construction begins in the next month or so. So then we'll see how that conversion goes on over there for that space. We have a few highlights from our local elementary schools. So at H. L. Johnson, congratulations to Mrs. Powali, who was named Outstanding Holocaust Educator for Palm Beach County by F. A. U. Mrs. Highsmith won the twenty twenty-three Go Tech Grant Award, and she's the only teacher in Royal Palm Beach to receive this award. And H. L. Johnson also has two foster grandparents, so they're helping twelve students win two classrooms with their learning and the teachers. So it's neat to see that they have extra help in there. Royal Palm Beach Elementary opened a Ben Carson Library this week. And Cypress Trails is a Ron Clark Academy School, and Mr. Clark visited them over the last month. So it's really neat just to see how our elementary schools are evolving. Thank you very much to H. L. Johnson for letting me come in and do read for the record again, so I love that. Some familiar faces in the kindergarten class, so it was really neat. Thank you to American Legion Post. We were over there for hosting our Veterans Day ceremony, so Post three-six-seven and Unit three-six-seven auxiliary. I had the opportunity to speak with Girl Scout Troop two-four-two-two-zero about democracy, what local government does, the importance of voting, so it was interesting. These young ladies coming through and the excitement, so I have hope in our future that we have some good leaders coming through. We attended the Farm City Luncheon, and just to give you some perspective, I mean, we always talk about farmers and all we do and how they feed us. But just from our area in Palm Beach County, we grow, and I'm gonna give you a couple stuff, so Diane, you can, I'll send you these later. Sugar cane, we produce sixty-five million pounds per year. Sweet corn, one billion per year, to feed, I'm sorry, one billion people per year. Green beans, three hundred and fifty million servings per year. Rice, a hundred and fifty million people we can feed per year. Radishes, three point six million pounds a year. Celery, a hundred and twenty million stalks. Lettuce, one, so make one billion pounds of salad. And cabbage, two hundred and fifty million servings. So just thinking, mostly from the Glades, these are our farmers that produce this, and we supply vegetation all the way up through, up and down the coast. Our Fire Ops, I had a tremendous opportunity to spend a Saturday with them, with some others, and go through fire training. So thank you very much to Palm Beach County Fire Rescue and Local two-nine-two-eight. And also, last year, they answered a hundred and fifty-four thousand nine-one-one calls. They serve over one million residents. They are Insurance Service Offices Class One rated, which is the highest in fire protection. And Palm Beach County Fire Rescue is the only fire department in the country to offer whole blood in the field. So this is means that they can now treat you when they triage you before you get to the hospital, and it's really helped in saving a lot of lives just from that. So I had the opportunity, we did a search and rescue, extraction, hose management, which was my favorite, and cardiac arrest response. So thank you again to Fire Ops, and that completes my report.
Wow, you've been busy. That was, sounds like fun, though.
It was.
No report, Mr. Mayor. Okay, evening, everybody. So Veterans Day was last week, as everybody knows, and Carolyn and I actually had the opportunity to attend four different Veterans Day events on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And it was, it was interesting and wonderful to see the schools actually so engaged in honoring and recognizing the veterans who not only themselves sacrificed with their service, but also to recognize their families as every one of the, the schools did in their ceremonies. And then, of course, we had the Saturday morning breakfast that Selena just talked about, and it was a very inspiring event. It was more than just the normal event that's usually well-done by the Legion Post three-sixty-seven. It actually had, is probably one of the most inspiring speeches that I've heard in a long time, a Reverend Chris Edmonds, whose story was about his father, Master Sergeant Rhodey Edmonds. His bravery and leadership in a World War Two prisoner-of-war camp in Germany was absolutely incredible. And he's actually been nominated for a Medal of Honor for that. Was a, was a great event. The best thing of these events is that the community comes together around recognizing and appreciating the veterans and their sacrifice. So it was a great week, and I want to thank everybody for, and especially the schools, for, for doing these, these events. Speaking of schools, our Education Advisory Board was the guinea pig for opening up and using this facility on Monday night. And it was great. It was absolutely great, because we had a little bit of a stage area, actually, that was perfect for Royal Palm Beach High School to bring their, their dancers to put on a performance. I think they did three numbers, and they are actually award-winning dance troupe. They did an amazing job. I know one of the dancers personally, actually, Councilman Valentes knows this one really, really well, and he claims credit for all her talent, actually. But it was a great event, it really was, and, and we got a chance to hear from Principal Fleming. She talked about the tagline that they've got now at Royal Palm Beach High School, which is the royal way. And it's, it's an interesting idea, and it's something I think that, that really can make an impact. It sets behavioral and achievement goals for, for the entire school. Principal Fleming shared some important facts that indicate the school's progress, I think, over the last couple of years. Last year's graduation rate was almost ninety-two percent. The student population this year is larger than I think it's ever been before. It's at twenty-four hundred and fifty-nine students. To date, sixty-seven percent of the students are all enrolled, are enrolled, in advanced courses, with a goal of getting seventy percent enrolled. The class of twenty twenty-two, last year's class, actually earned about two point one million dollars in scholarships, pretty impressive, including fifty-seven Bright Futures Academic Scholarships and twenty Vocational Scholarships. Principal Fleming was, was proud to announce also that Lisa Jones, the Assistant Principal at Royal Palm Beach High School for a number of years, has just been selected as the Assistant Principal of the Year for the District Central, District Central Region. She now competes for, at the district level, for A. P. of the Year, and then hopefully on to state level. So congratulations to Ms. Jones, to the school. It's certainly well, well-deserved. Our Education Advisory Board members, by the way, are doing a great job. They really are. They're very actively engaged, you know, each one of them has a liaison responsibility for each one of the schools in Royal Palm Beach, and they are actually participating and attending. On their, on their reports, they actually get to talk about some of the events that they participate in. And our chairwoman, Paula Wilson, is, is leading by example. She's out there, she was at a lot of the veterans' things that the schools were doing. She was at the ribbon-cutting over at Royal Palm Beach Elementary for the Ben Carson Reading Room, which, by the way, if you get a chance to go over and see it, you gotta see it. It is absolutely fantastic. It's a great place that's set up perfect to be comfortable, fun, and a quiet place where students can relax and, and read a good book. The furnishings and, and the books themselves were provided, funded through a twenty thousand dollar grant that was sponsored by New Day USA and the Ben Carson Education Foundation. This is one of only two hundred and seventy-nine Ben Carson reading rooms in the country. So congratulations to Royal Palm Beach Elementary. Now, all of our schools, you heard Selena talk about some of the other activities, have great things going on, and each one uniquely contributes to advancing the quality of education in Royal Palm Beach. It's a lot to be proud of, there really is, and I know we have one of our principals sitting in the audience right now. So congratulations to all our principals, to teachers, and to the staff of all of our schools in Royal Palm Beach. Selena also mentioned the Chamber Annual Event, which is the Farm City Luncheon, and the guest speaker was the Commissioner of Agriculture and Consumer Services, Wilton Simpson. He delivered special remarks. He had a couple of interesting comments. He had a lot of interesting comments, but a couple of that really stuck with me. First of all, his background is, he was the Senate President for two of his ten years in the Florida Legislature, so he has a pretty good background. Even better than that, his family has been involved for decades in farming. And one of the things he, he said was that we really need to consider agriculture as a national security issue, and nothing less important than that. They also had a panel of four young farmers. Some of them were fourth-generation farmers. And they talked a lot about their experiences, their perspectives on farming today and in the future. When they were asked how all of us can help agriculture, they said, obviously, buy local, fresh-from-Florida produce. And the other thing they said was, visit a local farm. If you haven't had a chance to do that, do that. And we're very fortunate. We're very close to a lot of farms right out in the Glades area. Speaking of which, that is visiting farms, I want to remind my colleagues that the annual League of Cities Holiday Networking Barbecue, it's a mouthful, and Farm Tour will be held at Belle Glade at Lomax Harold Pavilion on December the eighth. The Farm Tour starts promptly at eight A. M. in the morning, so you have to behave like a farmer. Get up really early to make the bus. It's worth the tour. I've done it twice. It is fantastic. The barbecue starts at eleven-thirty, and as usual, we've been asked to drop off an unwrapped gift for the youth of the Glades community. There's also a golf tournament out there. It's always a great event. It's an opportunity to actually see a local working farm. So I suggest that if you haven't had the chance to tour a farm, you know, join the group at eight o'clock in the morning, climb on the bus, and you'll get to walk in the muck, which is a treat. That completes my report.
Okay, good. What was that date again?
December the eighth.
Which is a Friday, I believe?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Let me continue on with that education thread. I had the opportunity of going and touring the new Learning Center, our autism school, and we are, and the community is very fortunate to have this school. The, not only are the teachers and principals highly educated with master's degrees and PhDs, but you can tell this is a very nurturing and loving environment for these students. There's art everywhere, and of course, you know, that appeals to me. But there was art everywhere, and kids are, kids are, you can just sense when you go into a school, if the atmosphere is nurturing and it's beautiful. And so I understand that towards the end of the month, they're gonna do an official ribbon-cutting, and so
They are.
we'll be invited to, to, to visit. So the other, the other tour we got to see is the Clerk of Courts has opened a new facility in our Midwestern Community Service Center. And so all the things you could do before, either downtown and, and in parts here, you can still do. So you can pay a, make a payment for a ticket or a court fee. You can record documents. You can get a marriage license. You could obtain legal forms, but now they've expanded it, and you can also use their private marriage ceremony room, which is lovely. And, but in, on a serious note, they also have an opportunity for you to have injunctions for protection against domestic violence. They didn't have this as an opportunity out here. You'd have to go either all the way to Belle Glade or all the way to the coast. And so they've partnered with AVDA to have these services available to our, our, our local community. And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Yeah, just a note, we're, we're, we're working to make sure we get the information out to our community about the number of new services that are now available from the Clerk of Court at, right here in Royal Palm Beach. And it will save people, you know, the task of going either downtown to West Palm Beach or all the way out to Belle Glade. But it's interesting. I ran into two citizens just a couple of days after they opened, and they mentioned to me that they had to go, they, they were dreading that they had to go downtown to West Palm Beach to the courthouse. I says, what are you going down there for? And then they told me what they were going, I says, well, I think you could get that done now, right here in, in Royal Palm Beach. So this is something I think that's very, gonna be very useful and beneficial to our community. And just to make another little kind of an announcement, I'm gonna be working with our county commissioner. We, we decided we will start looking at this initiative in January to try to get some kind of kiosk service for DMV-type services that you may need at that same location. So keep your ears open for that. Hopefully, that's something that also can come to pass. But we're really happy that the Clerk of Court has moved those services here as well, here in Royal Palm Beach. That's, that was really great. That's it? Yeah, right.
Okay, since we're going with an education theme, I'll lead off with an educational story. So this last week, we had our meeting with all the principals. Captain Iax hosts a breakfast meeting once a year with all the principals from all the public schools, inclusive of all the charter schools and, and the private schools that are out there. They all attend it. It is, it's, it's a really good meeting. From my perspective, to see the camaraderie between all the principals and how they work together, we really are fortunate in Royal Palm Beach to have the, the, the school systems and the schools that we have here and the professionals we have working, working here. So that's my education part. The, the one thing I want to mention, our, our code requires that we have a meeting on the first or third Thursday of the month. I'd like to have the meeting in December, December seventh, instead it's the December twenty-first, if that's okay with the council.
I would think that would be okay, right? I mean, we would get the, that holiday week completely free, so traveling will be impaired. So I think we have a complete consensus on that. So the, our next council meeting will be December seventh.
December seventh.
Okay.
And that's all I have. Mayor, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Keith?
Okay. Good evening, everyone. At our last council meeting, the council directed me to look into the use of the boat and RV lot and the legal documents that are behind how we use that. I have done so, and if you'd like me to use my time under my report to give you my findings and opinion, I'm happy to do that now.
As long as it's not an hour.
Talk fast.
No, no, I'm good, correct.
So it's, by way of background, and I'm sure that, that you're all aware, you know, back, and I guess it was in twenty thirteen or twenty fourteen, the Diocese of Palm Beach gave the village by quitclaim deed this land. The deed has language in it that, that's known as a reverter clause. And basically, what it says that, is that the village can have this land so long as the village uses it for a public purpose. If at any time the village stops using it for a public purpose, then it reverts back to the diocese. This allows the diocese to take back the land at its option if it, if the, the public purpose element goes away. As far back as December of twenty fourteen, the, the village has been very aware that the diocese is extremely sensitive to this issue. It's very, very important to them. Back in late twenty fourteen, there was written correspondence between the diocese's attorney and my, my office on this topic. There had been, I guess, rumors and concerns that the village was gonna turn this into a commercial storage facility. And their attorney wrote us and reminded us about the reverter clause in the deed. We sent them back a letter. And we were very clear that we understood the public purpose use requirement for the land. We were very clear in our letter, and we assured the diocese in writing that we intended to honor that public purpose use. We specifically promised that there would be no commercial, that would not be a commercial storage facility, that it would not store commercial trucks, it would not store commercial motor vehicles or commercial work vehicles. More, more importantly, we promised in this letter that we would allow, we would allow three things, and only three things. Res, residence RVs, residence boats, and the boat trailers that hold the residence boats, and that was it. This is important, you know, in getting to the, the legal conclusion, because in our code and, and in, in state law, a boat trailer is defined in a different way than a storage trailer or an enclosed trailer or a work trailer. Those are different things with different definitions, so it's important to keep that in mind. In twenty fourteen, the diocese did not object to our asserted plans to use it for resident RV and, and boat storage. So, as you know, we proceeded to engineer and construct the site to be used in that fashion. In addition, because we were aware and sensitive to the diocese's very strong feelings about this, we created lease documents for our residents to sign that, that set out the rules and, and the, and the regulations for storing their things on this lot. Importantly, this document that's been in use for the last decade is very clear that enclosed trailers, storage trailers, whether they're opened or closed, are strictly prohibited. And there's a reason for this, because there's, you know, one of the things we require the residents to do when they sign these agreements to store their boats or RVs is they have to send us pictures of what they're storing, so that the staff can, you know, manage and keep track of this and be able to assure the diocese that in fact we are honoring our commitment to not allow any kind of commercial use to creep into, into this, into this boat and RV lot. You know, it, this went along, okay, for a couple of years. In twenty sixteen, and I'm sure you're all aware, there's a cemetery next door to this site. Well, the operator of the cemetery had personal opinions about how this property was being used and had philosophical opposition to the village having been given the property at all and using it at all in this fashion. So that generated a twenty sixteen letter from the diocese's attorney to the village, which we had to respond to, and we did. And we, in that twenty sixteen letter, we vigorously defended how we're using the property. We explained the legal definition of what is a public purpose and, and, and went into great lengths to remind the attorney for the diocese that, you know, in twenty fourteen, we spelled out exactly what we were going to do. There was no objection submitted by the diocese. Between then and that twenty sixteen letter, there were multitude of public meetings where we hired engineers. We, we went through the process to develop that site. Never once was there attendance by the diocese or objection given to the village by the diocese. And since then, and all the way up to today, now here we are, almost twenty twenty-four, almost ten years later, there has been no further objections or concerns submitted to the village from the diocese telling us that what we have done and what we are doing, if it doesn't satisfy them, it, it, they're, they have at least not, not opposed in writing or, or in any other fashion, the way we're handling this in terms of what we're allowing and how we're allowing it and how we're enforcing it and, and operating it, including, you know, how we have verbalized and, and, and how we have reduced to writing our lease with our tenants. And by the way, the village, it's my understanding, Ray, correct me if I'm wrong, where there's over two hundred residents who take advantage of this, of this lot right now, who have been able to sign that lease agreement and comply with, with, with the terms that, that we have put in it, including the strict prohibition against enclosed trailers. One thing that's important that, that I think the council should keep in mind, it's my understanding, in the past, we have turned away a resident who wanted to store a recreational race car in a, an enclosed trailer.
Yeah, I remember that.
Very arguably not a commercial, not a commercial use, but it's an enclosed trailer. And that's not allowed. And, and the reason it's not allowed, and, and again, the manager can correct me if I'm wrong, you know, to, to deviate from the way we've operated for the last decade and start allowing these enclosed trailers, there's no way to tell what's in those enclosed trailers. And if the diocese felt like there's an opportunity for commercial uses to start creeping into this property, you know, there's no way to reasonably tell at any given time what might be in any one of these trailers. You know, as I said, you have over two hundred tenants. If even twenty percent of them were to switch gears and start using one of these enclosed trailers, that's twenty trailers that the village now has to figure out a way to satisfy the diocese's terms that there are no commercial activities going on, and, and, you know, and again, I, you know, I'll defer to Ray, but my understanding is there's no reasonable, it, it would not be a reasonable imposition on staff to do that, to, to be able to monitor that, to be able to satisfy the diocese. We have seen historically that, again, this is a very sensitive topic for them. They have, both times they felt like that there may have been a violation of that public use requirement. They have not hesitated to reach out with very strongly worded letters. My opinion is that it would be, we would be exposing ourselves to a possibility of the diocese wanting to claw back with the reverter clause if we were to start allowing this type of use. Having to defend that, so that's the village. that, so that's the village. By doing so, you're, you're exposing all of those residents to losing this very important asset that, that they have. So, you know, given the historic reaction and how we've responded to the diocese, given, and this is important, the definition of what's a boat trailer versus what's a storage trailer or an enclosed trailer, they're different things and our written assurance to the diocese ten years ago that we were only going to allow boats and boat trailers and RVs. My opinion is that, that deviating from that to find a way to accommodate this request that was brought to you last month would expose the village to liability and/or burden staff in dealing with this maintenance and operation of this lot beyond what's reasonable. So that, that's my finding, that's my opinion. I hope that that's been informative. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try and answer them.
Oh, any comments, questions for members on council? Go ahead.
I, I, first of all, thank you, Keith, for the work. And enclosed trailer is the term I'm focusing on, and what I've seen pictures of it, it's an enclosed trailer. So my thought would be to do exactly what you said. But the one thought I did have is because this is, you know, stuff we were gifted from the diocese. And I think I brought it up, or maybe the applicant did last month. If, if some way this were transparent and you could actually see that this was a boat trailer, I'd still vote against it because, as you said, it's, it's an enclosed trailer, so I don't think it qualifies. But I don't know that it would be, and, and we should tell the diocese that, but I don't see what, unless you think it's just a bad idea to ask them, say, hey, look, we have this special, unique situation where the guy's arguing it's a boat trailer, and we see his argument, but our position is we think that it's an enclosed trailer. We don't want to do anything to violate the agreement between us. And ask them if this would be permissible as a boat trailer in their eyes, and if they say no, that's the end of it.
So two things come to mind with that, and, and I understand where you're going. Number one, I, I point back to what we assured the diocese in writing in twenty fourteen, actually, three things. Number two, the definitions of boat trailer versus enclosed trailer. But number three, and this is probably the biggest issue, is that even if the diocese said okay, and, and, and we allowed this for this person, well, the next person's going to show up. And what are you going to do for that person? Then you have a due process issue, and, and again, I, I.
We're not going to be going to the diocese every time.
A door that is going to be extremely difficult to close.
And Richard, I think you brought up a good point the last time. So if I have a horse trail and I have kayaks in it, is it now a boat trailer?
Exactly.
And you can even answer that question, yes, it is. But when those kayaks come out of that trailer, now it's a horse trailer or a cargo trailer. So it's, it's never a hundred percent a boat trailer. And, and, and being part of those conversations with the church and under, and, and listening to them and their concerns, we, we, I mean, we negotiated the RV, the boat, and the boat trailer. And I mean, and they were discussions, we said we're limited to those three.
And, and your thought is that because you were involved in that, which I was before me, but that's something that probably no go.
Well, I know for the person that we dealt with, I can't imagine it ever being a go.
Okay.
Ever. But the bigger, the bigger problem with that is, I don't know, unless you really documented it, you wouldn't want somebody to agree at the church now. We were dealing with their real estate agent and, and then the lawyer that they hired. If, if.
Yeah, we don't want to open up a can of worms.
We'd have to redo all these documents.
Right.
Because we, there's no way we could get an agreement from locally or something. I don't.
Okay.
But I, I just don't see him going along with it. I really don't.
Not only that, we, we vehemently agreed to a certain way of what, what they asked for and what we were going to do. And I don't want us to now come back double, you know, trying to change our tune of what we originally agreed to. And as you mentioned, Richard, it could open up a can of worms that we don't want to open, so.
One of the other concerns they had was the frequency of use. If a commercial use storage facility is used, there's traffic going in and out every morning, every afternoon, every day. And, and, and they were, that's because we're using the same road to go in and out. So, so we, we added another piece to it where we limit the number of times people can, can go in and go out. So, so we, 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 we did everything we can to, to, to appease them, and I, I, I think going back to them at this time would.
I don't think it's a good, a, a good idea. Questions, comments?
Not a boat person, but I believe there are boat trailers for kayaks that are open and they're not enclosed, and you can see.
So get a kayak boat trailer. That's one approach.
Yeah, from my point of view, we, we would be likely to be reopening concern and kind of inspiring concern on the part of the diocese. If we were to go back after all of this time and after all of the encounters that we've had to try to be as definitive as we possibly could be to ensure them that we were going to have this for public use only, for public purpose only. And if we start, what if, what about this, what about that?
Can't do that.
I'm just concerned, especially because I have looked at some of these letters, that we went too extremes to ensure then that we would make sure that it would not become a commercial.
That's why I said we vehemently said, oh, no, we're not going to do that, these things. All right. Keith, I applaud you for taking the time to do the research you did because this is an interesting example as time goes by, right? In terms of continuity of governance and strategic policy, right? That's why you have to make sure we document the things we're doing as we're going along because some of the folks who may have been involved in creating that may not be around, but we have it documented exactly what happened, exactly what our intent was, and how we came out with a policy that we now have to still continue to execute. So, thank you.
Always my pleasure to assist this council.
Ray, you contact the applicant and let him know that, you know, because at, at the meeting, last meeting, we told him we would look at this, you know, understand the legal definition and, you know, exactly what, what our, our legal position or options are. And obviously, we don't really have that option.
Yes, Mayor, I will.
To do some of the things we were talking about and, and share with him the suggestion that was made by councilwoman.
I will.
That, that's a, it, it may sound very simple, but that may be an approach.
I will, thank you.
Okay. I think that concludes our reports. A lot of reports this evening. At this time, anyone have a petition they'd like to present to the council? Now would be the time to present that. You can't hear me? Does it echo, echo, echo? So I'll have to be close to the mic to eliminate the echo?
I'm on there.
No, no. Thank you. Right. Okay. These are different mics. Have to get used to them. All right. I see no one coming up with a petition at this time, so I'm going to close the floor to petitions this evening. And at this time, Diane, do we have any prior requests or statements from the public on non-agenda items?
No, Mayor.
Or the consent agenda?
No.
Ray, do we still have hands? That can be raised?
I do, Mayor. I have less because your five aren't on mine anymore. So we went down to nine.
But we have no hands raised?
No, we do not.
Okay. I don't have any comment cards for items, non-agenda items or consent agenda, but if anyone would still like to do that, I would give them that opportunity now. Seeing none, then I'm going to close the floor to non-agenda items and consent agenda items. And with that, Diane, can you give us the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Number one, approval of the minutes of the council regular meeting of September twenty first, twenty twenty three, and council regular meeting of October nineteenth, twenty twenty three. Two, authorization to reject all bids received and opened at three P M. on Wednesday, October eleventh, twenty twenty three for custodial services. Three, adoption of resolution twenty three forty nine, a resolution of the village council of the Village of Royal Palm Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing, in accordance with established policy, the making of a budget amendment for Fund zero zero one in the fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget. Said amendment to transfer a total of twenty six thousand five hundred dollars from restricted fund balance for police education to Police Department Police Education five two one four nine five zero. Four, adoption of resolution twenty three fifty, a resolution of the village council of the Village of Royal Palm Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing, in accordance with established policy, the making of a budget amendment for Fund zero zero one in the fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three budget. Said amendment represents the year-end budget adjustment and appropriates two hundred and four thousand three hundred and forty one dollars from restricted fund balance for police education and electricity franchise revenue to increased amounts budgeted in the police and non-departmental department. Five, approval of a special event permit for the Village of Royal Palm Beach to hold a winter festival at Royal Palm Beach Commons Park on Saturday, December second, twenty twenty three, from one P M. to nine P M. Six, approval of a special event permit for H L Johnson Elementary, Royal Palm Beach Village School, S D P B C, to hold a winter concert at the Village of Royal Palm Beach Commons Park Amphitheater stage at one one six zero zero Point Sienna Boulevard on December fifth, twenty twenty three, from five P M. until eight P M. And December seventh, twenty twenty three, from five P M. until eight P M. Seven, approval of special event permit for Our Lady, Queen of the Apostles Catholic Church to hold a Christmas village and festival at one hundred Crestwood Boulevard on December first, second, eighth, and ninth, twenty twenty three, from four P M. until eleven P M. And December third and tenth, twenty twenty three, from four P M. until ten P M. And eight, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute an agreement with Urbana LLC to perform general planning and development revenue services for two years, which may be extended for two additional terms of one year each.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from members on council on the consent agenda? If not, I'll look for a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Can we, can we just pull number six?
Six? Okay.
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Were you going to do that?
Pull number six. Make that part of your.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, accept item number six.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show that all consent agenda items were approved with the exception of item number six, and you wanted to speak about that.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify one thing. When I had the conversation with the principal, I went, I advised her that we, we don't, we, we hire for audio and, and lighting. The application had that in there. It looked like it was part of the request. It was not. It was clarified in T S R, but it was not made a special condition. And I believe the principal has already gotten in touch with our consultant or vendor that we use for lighting and audio. And I just wanted to clarify that that, that is something they're handling for the event.
Do you like to comment? Please, come on up.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. Uh, yes, we are, the vendor that you have suggested has taken on that, and we are a part of our, our event. So yes, we are with them, and they have agreed to be a part of it, and we are, we have a partnership going.
Anything else?
Can I, can I ask her one question? So, because, you know, when I asked the question, how come we're not doing this at the cultural center as part of our shared agreement? And I, and, and what I got back was because the crowd that you're expecting is too big for the cultural center. So what are you expecting here?
Yes, sir. So we are the largest elementary school in Royal Palm Beach with eight hundred and sixty students. We need two nights in order to have half of that, so four hundred and thirty students. If just two family members and each of those students came, we would be at eight hundred plus. So that is the problem. And cultural center, I believe it's six hundred plus is what you can have inside. And then your parking spots are only six hundred. And where the commons park has six hundred parking spots, not including the two grass areas in which you use for parking.
Wow, I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah.
Great.
Perfect. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so look for a motion?
I make a motion to approve consent agenda item number six.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show that consent agenda item number six was also approved five zero. Okay, with that, we'll move on to the regular agenda. The first agenda item, or one, is a public hearing to consider application number two three dash one three three, an application by Crossroads R two G owner, L C, LLC, and adoption of resolution number two three dash four seven. The applicant, applicant is seeking a modification to a council improve, imposed condition to further extend the timeline for the installation of the required public art for property located at one one eight zero Royal Palm Beach Boulevard. I believe that's our new Publix? Yes, okay. This is a quasi judicial hearing, so people will have to be sworn in.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you approach the podium and state your name for the record, ma'am? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jan Alota, and I'm an attorney with the law firm of Holland and Knight.
Can you raise your right hand? I'll swear you in, please. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I will.
And Mr. O'Brien, were you also sworn? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, sir? Thank you, sir. And I'll turn back and, I'm sorry, Mr. Pisani, you as well. Raise your right hand for me. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, sir?
Aye, sir.
Thank you, and I'll turn back to the council for any ex parte disclosures.
Good evening, council. This applicant is requesting a modification of council imposed condition, a further, further meant previously approved condition two B, to extend the timeline for the installation of the public, the art in public places required for the project. Based on the information provided by Sachi Art and the artist, the owner has been advised that due to the commitment by the artist and another commission, the fabric, fabrication for the original art piece, the time is estimated to be ninety days with another two months for shipping of the final piece from China to the site. As owner does not want to be in default of the revised condition, it respectfully requests a further modification of condition two B to allow sufficient time to comply. The current proposed modification were, will further extend the timeline for the installation of the public art piece to twelve months from the date of council approved, approval of application number twenty three zero four zero. A strike through and underline of the proposed modification, the condition of approval is as follows. The yard in public places requirement in section twenty six dash seventy five point five of the village code must be met. The public art requirement for this project is one percent of the total vertical construction cost using a certified cost estimate equivalent to fifty three thousand seven eighty five. The art installation shall be in the location depicted on the site plan and shall be within strike through of six and twelve months of the date of village council approval of application number twenty three zero four zero M C I C. The applicant shall provide a performance bond in the amount of twice the certified cost estimate for the required public art, a hundred and seven thousand, a little bit above, to purchase, ship, transport, and install the required public art in the event of default of this condition. And just for a little bit more information, I believe the resolution was signed on eighteenth of May. It was supposed to be done around middle of November, and they are requesting a six-month extension for around middle of November, uh, May of twenty twenty four. And staff actually is recommending approval of application number twenty three one three eight M C I C through the adoption of resolution number twenty three dash four seven.
Like to make comment?
Yes, just a few, just to, to add a little bit more information. As you all probably remember when I was before you in May, excuse me, can you hear me okay?
Sure.
With the initial request to change and modify the condition, we knew at that time we were likely going to be back before you asking for more time. As that ti, as in May, we hadn't had the artwork yet approved. The artwork was approved in August, I believe August seventeenth, by the, the council. We immediately made payment pursuant to the agreement with Sachi Art. The artist advised us at that time that it was going to take three months for fabrication versus two that we were initially told. Consistent with what the artist told us, just as an update, we have been advised that the artwork, it will be completed at the end of this month and shipped to the United States. If the two-month shipping time holds with the artwork coming from China, we're expecting.
Oh, it's coming from China, two months, that explains that, yeah, sure.
So, and we've been advised that it's two months because I'm assuming it's crated up and it goes on a ship. So, and somehow gets here. In any event, so we are expecting to receive the artwork at the end of January. In the interim, we are preparing the plans to actually get permitted because we need to come in and permit the actual foundation and illumination, the in-ground lighting. So that will occur before the artwork arrives so that the foundation will be ready because it's a pretty simple installation of the artwork on the, the, the concrete foundation pad. So we are anticipating installation and completion likely very early February, late January, early February. However, I do not want to have to come back before you asking for more time because if something happens with respect to the shipment from China, thus we ask for just. happens with respect to the shipment from China, thus we ask for just an additional six months. But we fully expect that the artwork will be installed well before then. And I just wanted to give you, and again, as we understand it, consistent with they said, we paid at the end of August, three months later, the artwork is now going to be shipped at the end of November, and the bond still is in place.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take public comment at this time. Diane, were there any prior comments made from the public? No. Ready? Anyone have their hands raised? I have not received any public comment cards on this agenda item, but if anyone does would like to comment, I would give them an opportunity. Saying none, I'm closing public comment to this agenda item. Take comments from members on council. If there are no comments or questions, I'll take a motion.
Oh, Jana, thank you for the presentation. I, I had a lot of questions before I talked to staff, and I, I'm, I understand the timeline and time, things just take time. And so I understand, and so I'm, I'm happy to make that motion.
Just for clarification, the piece is almost completed or completed?
We were told the piece will be completed, will be completed by the end of this month and will be shipped.
Okay, so there isn't a holdup on, I understand the transportation and everything that. I, my concern is, is it should be completed, but it doesn't get completed.
They, they advised us it was going to take three months for fabrication, largely because he couldn't start right away, because he was completing another piece.
Right.
Um, and we did receive word that he is on schedule and it will be completed and shipped by the end of this month.
Okay.
I'm happy, once that occurs, I'm happy to advise staff, so they will know and if, and they can provide an update to you, so you know that it's en route.
I just wanted to clarify, so that it wasn't as though, oh, I'm not happy with it now, I need to start again, there's something else I'm waiting for, you know, not on your end, on the artist's end.
Understood, understood. We've, we've heard nothing that there's any hiccups in that regard, council member.
Creativity, huh? I get you. Any other comments?
The, the good news is they, he won't start from scratch. None of those materials, right?
You'll make a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve regular agenda item number one.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that agenda item all one was approved five zero. Thank you. Good luck.
The tracking number, I will try to get one, but I don't know if they'd do that. But I have to say, the chambers, the new village hall is beautiful. I'm happy to be here on its inaugural night for your, your meeting.
Please come back anytime. Not with this issue. I won't. Thank you.
Okay. I didn't want to go there, but yeah, we do. We absolutely do. That's right. Okay, regular agenda item number two is a public hearing to consider variance application number two-three-dash-zero-nine-three, an approval of variance order V. C. dash-two-three-dash-zero-seven, an application by Bar Education, Inc., requesting a variance approval to allow for variance to village code section two-three-dash-four-nine, sub-B, sub-six-B, to provide a four-point-seven foot wide sidewalk where village code requires a six-foot pedestrian accessway when parking and is provided in the rear of the building for a property located at three hundred and four hundred Commerce Road. This is a quasi judicial item, so whatever, people sworn in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you state your name for the record?
Kaiser, with Kaiser Legal, on behalf of applicant Bar Education, doing business as the primary school of Royal Palm Beach.
Thank you, and you are here for both items two and three, so I'll swear you in for both, and then I'll take counsel to ex parte disclosures. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much, ma'am. And this applicant is here for items two and three, so I'll ask for ex parte disclosures from the council on both of those items.
No.
Village staff.
Aye.
Traffic, you are.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. The applicant is requesting variance approval to allow for, from village code section twenty-three forty-nine B. Six B. to provide for a four-point-seven foot wide sidewalk where village code requires six feet, foot, for a pedestrian accessway. The property is located at three hundred and four hundred Royal Commerce Road. Village, this section states that there shall be no parking in the rear of any building or structure unless a pedestrian accessway within a minimum of six feet in width is provided, connecting the rear parking area to the public entrance in the front of the building. You can see here on this slide, this is the location of the reduction in the width of the sidewalk. Village code section twenty-six thirty-two F. Six allows the village council to grant variances to the code when special conditions and circumstances exist, which are peculiar to the land structure or building involved, do not result from the app, actions of the applicant, will not confer on the applicant any special privilege. A literal interpretation of the provisions of the division would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties. That the variance granted is a minimum variance that will make possible the reasonable use of the land, will be in harmony with the general intent purpose of this division, will not be injurious to the area involved detrimental to the public welfare. The applicant contends that special conditions and circumstances exist, which are peculiar to the property, and which are not applicable, applicable to other lands, structures, or buildings, subject to similar requirements. Royal Commerce Park was approved in nineteen eighty-four, and the existing buildings upon the property were originally constructed from nineteen eighty-four to eighty-six pursuant to the regulations at that time. And as such, there are a number of existing site constraints upon the property that the applicant has endeavored to improve upon in designing the improvements to the property to support the primary school of Royal Palm Beach. Village staff generally agrees with the applicant in that, given the current site constraints, special conditions or circumstances exist, which are not applicable to other lands, granting the variance will not confer on the applicant any special privileges that are denied to other lands. The Planning Zoning Commission considered the application on October twenty-fourth and recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Staff is recommending approval of this application, and I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Appicat, would you like to make any comments?
Yes, good evening. Happy Thanksgiving. And for, since we're on agenda items two and three, I'd like to consolidate my presentation into one, so I don't have to bore you twice, if that's okay.
Sure.
Are you able to see my presentation? There we go. Thank you very much. So I, I've already had the pleasure of coming before you and describing to you the conversion from the ideal school to the primary school of Royal Palm Beach and the unique collaboration between the college and the preschool. The college students can get hands-on training in early learning and where we can educate our community's children for ages six weeks to five years old. So I'll go ahead and skip through the slide, but I, I did want to share with you, Vice Mayor, that we have now a beautiful relationship with the Learning Center, and when we're able to do our assessments of our children in school and determine that there are certain childrens and families that need more specialized attention, we've been able to refer over to the Learning Center, and we've actually had some families, you know, part, you know, go over to the Learning Center from our center. So it's really been a beautiful relationship. So thank you for the opportunity to, for bringing us both on board. And you've also seen the slide, but I did update it, so I just wanted to share with you that primary school, as you recall, it's a leader in early learning education. They're now up to four hundred and fifty schools in thirty states, serving sixty thousand families. But what's really important is recent data shows that nine out of ten primary pre-K students are kindergarten-ready. And also, it's also very important to each primary school that they become a part of the communities that they serve. So we're in the middle of our canned food drive, and we will be picking a local nonprofit right here in Royal Palm Beach to make those donations to. So this is an aerial view of the development site. You generally know that it's located north of Southern Boulevard, between Lampstein Lane and Royal Palm Beach Boulevard, just south of Seminole Palms Drive. So I do have a reason for showing you how the interior came out, other than just bragging rights. There is a reason for showing you, but I did want to show that we've continued this use, we've updated the interior, and this is the result. So you're looking at the pictures of our welcome area, our reception area, and our conference room. This is our infant room for children ages six weeks to twelve years old. This is our toddler room for ages twelve months to twenty-four months. And this is our early learning classroom, our early preschool classroom for ages two years old, and this is our preschool classroom age three, and our pre-K classroom age four. And we want, the reason why we have a site plan modification application before you today and a variance application is because we want our outside to look as beautiful as our inside. So if you take a look at the pictures in front of you right now, these are the exterior pictures of our outside. We have a ripped awning, we've got mismatched signage, mismatched painting on the walls, and the site just really could use improvements to beautify the area and also make it safer for the children. So the next series of slides, I'm going to go through all of these site plan modifications. I've grouped them into categories to make it a little bit easier to present them and to understand. The first site plan modification that we're proposing is a new one-hundred-and-sixty-two square-foot vestibule at the main entrance. It provides a double entry. This is a very specific design for preschools for two reasons, security and weather protection. So the, in the vestibule, you'll have the exterior door, which is open to the public, but when you go into the vestibule, that second set of doors is locked. No one's allowed through there. Each family has a unique PIN code. They have to enter their PIN code in order to access the building and then go ahead and sign in their student and actually walk them to the classroom. This prevents, you know, other third parties who are not a part of our primary's family from entering the building whenever they want. They have to press an intercom button, and they have to speak to staff, and staff has to vet them before they're allowed in the building, do a background check, sign in, get a sticker, and they have to be escorted with a leadership team member. So if we have a vendor, a third party, a contractor who's coming to visit, they have to stay in that holding area until a leadership team member can be with them, and that's for the safety and security of our children, and also to provide a little area, a weather protection area for our families and guests. Part of the site plan modification proposal is to also present, present a new color scheme to make the building look more cleaner and more vibrant, and the good news is, is that our neighbor next door, the auto body shop, just repainted their building, and we're in kind of the same, whole plaza is going to look a whole lot better. Another reason for presenting, or what we're including in the site plan modification is an updated floor plan, floor plan, which I'll show you momentarily. I just wanted to show you some pictures of the front entrance and what the proposed vestibule is going to look like, and also show you the types of materials and the color palette for the front vestibule and the building. It's going to be kind of like a white with some bronze metal accents. And here's our updated floor plan. This is true to the interior of the ideal school, but we did modify the classrooms highlighted below to convert that area into our infant and toddler classrooms. We modified some of the bathrooms to make them ADA accessible, and what used to be their conference room, we converted into a full kitchen, because we have a chef on site that prepares meals fresh for our students every day. They provide breakfast, lunch, and four snacks. The next set of site plan modifications include constructing a new one-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-two, eighty-two square-foot infant toddler playground. So childcare licensing defines infants as under the age of two, and they have to have a completely separate playground from all the other age groups. So these, this playground, this playground will be directly accessible from those classrooms. The playground will have this new decorative, but also crash protection fencing, where the bollards are actually integrated into the fence, so you don't have those ugly concrete bollards that are right outside the fence. Now it's integrated into the fence. We're also installing a landscaped island to, to further beautify it and provide further, further separation and protection. On the south side of the property, highlighted in purple, you'll see an existing five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-six square-foot playground. We want to expand that, an additional two-thousand-and-three square feet. So you'll, we'll have an eight-thousand-square-foot playground. Those are for ages two to five. It will also be renovated with the new crash protection fencing, decorative fencing, new turf, and all new playground equipment. So in the next slide, you're going to see pictures of all the new playground equipment that will be installed per primary rose's standards. They all have shade protection. They'll all be brand new. The next set of site plan modifications include upgrades to the site. So we're modifying the handicap accessible parking now that we're building the vestibule. We're providing new and modified pedestrian circulation. We're providing a full access driveway west of the three hundred building, because now that we do have our lovely neighbor, the Learning Center, they have stacking on the only ingress from Seminole Palms Drive. So that gets blocked in the morning, and our families can't get in, so we would like to, the drive aisle with here is wide enough to do ingress and ingress, and we can make this dedicated just for our students and our families to come into our site and access our site from Seminole Palms Drive. And then just a little bit of a backout space just to accommodate the expansion of the playground. We are adding a canopy on the north side of the building to provide some weather protection for these double set of doors, a flagpole, and we are installing new wall signage for the four hundred building. These are images of the north side of the building and the west side of the building, where the main entrance is, and the renderings and elevations for the signage that we're proposing. And these are just additional elevations, so you can see the full side of the building and the two areas where a signage will be located. And this is a landscape plan, so in this landscape plan, what we're showing you, particularly in the plant calculation sections, is that there was a landscape plan approved back in two thousand and nine. We want to replace all the existing landscaping that has died and bring it up to, up to the same approval as the two thousand and nine plan, and we're adding additional palms and shrubs to that plan. So all the things that are dead and dying or just need to be replaced for it to look more beautiful will be, will be replaced on site as part of this site plan modification request. Just a quick note about parking and traffic. The required parking is fifty-seven, and the parking provided is sixty-two. Just a friendly reminder that our school does not have any car stacking. Our parents don't drop off their children at a set time every day. They have a window from seven A. M. to ten A. M., and it's really sporadic throughout that window. Same thing with pickup time. The pickup, we close at six P. M., but parents pick up between three and six P. M., and they pick up and drop off at all different times. They have to park their vehicles and walk their children into the facility and walk them to their classroom, and the same thing when, when they are leaving. So the cars are parked in parking stalls for anywhere from six to ten-minute intervals, and it just happens throughout that three-hour window. So you never have all the vehicles there at one time, and you never have car stacking with drop-off and pickup. Just another note about traffic. You'll see the T. P. S. letter. We're continuing and approved in existing use. There's no changes to the maximum number of students that's proposed, and also childcare licensing actually only permits us less than what the village approval was, so we have zero impacts to traffic, no additional trips, which is reflected in the T. P. S. letter. So now that you have a full understanding of the site plan modifications, the variance now is going to make a lot more sense to you. The village code, as Bradford mentioned, requires a six-foot wide pedestrian accessway. We're focusing on the north side of the building, where we actually provide a seven-foot sidewalk. But as you can see, the sidewalk is seventy feet wide. We're providing seven feet, but in this small six-point-eight-foot width portion of the sidewalk, there's a D. D. C. V., a double detector check valve. I did not know what that is, but now I do. It is a backflow that prevents water from backflowing into the fire water distribution system that can provide contaminants. We don't want to touch that. We don't want there to be, we don't want to mess with anything that has to do with life safety. So we would just like to get a small variance. I believe it is less than ten percent there for just four, four point, and reduce the seven feet to four-point-seven feet, just in this small portion of the sidewalk. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. All of the criteria that the code requires has been addressed in our justification statement, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
We go to questions from members on council. Diane, were any pre comments made by the public on agenda item R. Two? Ray, any hands raised?
No, Mayor.
Okay. I've not received any public comment cards on agenda item R. Two, but if anyone would like to comment, now would be the time. Okay, saying none, I'm going to close the floor then to public comments on agenda item R. Two, and open up the question. I do have a question. I'm not, I don't recall. What's the age range of your student body?
Six weeks to five years old.
Yeah.
Six weeks to five years old.
Six weeks to five years old. Wow, how do you handle six weeks? That's.
Actually, we have a curriculum for six-week-old babies. They actually, in those, you, it's really amazing, but they can learn in that first year of life.
But they do learn. We may not realize it, but they are learning.
They are learning every second, and they're adorable. That, too.
All right. There are no questions or comments from members on council. Look for a motion. Agenda item R. Two.
Make a motion to approve agenda item R. Two.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor? I have a motion and a second on favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show that agenda item R two was approved, five zero. And now I'll read agenda item R three, which is also related. It's a public hearing to consider application number two two dash eight one, an application by Bar Education Inc. In addition to resolution number two three dash four one confirming the council's action. The applicant is seeking a major site plan modification, architectural approval for modifications to existing parking, landscape, playground area, existing building for a property located at three hundred, four hundred Royal Commons Road. Everyone's been sworn in already, so prefer it.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Um, I am going to give our conclusion because the applicant did a very good presentation. And what the P and Z recommended and what we're recommending, okay? Um, overall, the proposed site plan improvements meet all of the village's requirements for this type of use in the industrial general zoning district. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this application on October twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-three and recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. And staff is recommending approval of this application twenty-two eighty-one and resolution twenty-three forty-one. And I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bradford. You've already given us a very good, uh, insightful presentation. So with that, Diane, any pre requests, public comments, agenda item R three? Ray, anyone have their hand raised for agenda item R three?
No, Mayor, but I am picking up several more people.
You have more people? They wanted to tune in for this one specifically, I'm sure. Okay, um, I have no public, uh, public comment card submitted to me on agenda item R three, but if anyone would like to comment, now would be the time. Seeing none, then I'm going to close public comment to agenda item R three. Questions or comments from members on council?
Question. Um, is the equipment all accessible? The playground equipment you're putting in, is it accessible?
That's a good question. And I'm not sure I know the answer to that question. Let me go ahead and take a look at that.
Who's that?
Five.
When you say accessible, I'm not sure what you mean.
Physically accessible for, uh, disabilities.
Oh, okay, okay, I got you.
Taking a look at the infant toddler playground, absolutely. Um, taking a look at the two to five playground, it appears so. The only concern that I had was the fire truck, but I think I see a ramp on that fire truck. I'm happy to get confirmation for you, but I, I can't confirm a hundred percent at this time.
Okay. Any other questions? If there are none, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve regular agenda item R three.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second on the favor. Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show agenda item R three was approved, five zero. Good luck. What's your timeline to open the doors?
We're, we've actually been in operation since April seventeenth. But with this approval this evening, we're allowed to open up our infant and toddler classrooms. So thank you very much.
Item question though, did the mural make it from the cafeteria?
It didn't.
It didn't? Okay.
Uh, so the Primrose model used to have all that color and those pictures. But data and research has shown over the course of the last decade that that actually becomes very destructive to early learning learners. In order for them to focus on the task at hand, you really need to have more neutral walls or walls with their own artwork up there to implement the curriculum. But we, we, we kind of wanted the cafeteria walls. We did. They wouldn't let us. All right, happy holidays. I really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Okay, agenda item off R four. Is a public hearing to consider application number two three dash zero two three, an application by MPLD Consulting on behalf of Crestwood Square LTD. An adoption of resolution number two three dash four zero confirming the council action. The applicant is seeking a site plan modification to expand the outdoor seating dining area from three hundred square feet to one thousand three hundred and twenty square feet at the existing Duffy's Sports Grill situated within the Crestwood Square Shopping Center for a property located at one one nine three five Southern Boulevard. This is a quasi judicial process, so we'll have to have people sworn in.
This is very similar items four and five, uh, is the same applicant, so I'll swear them in and then I'll take disclosures for both items. Can you both raise your right hands for me and state your names for the record?
My, my name is Rebecca Miller.
You, sir?
My name is Tyler Schultz.
From Tell the Truth, the Whole Truth, Nothing But the Truth? Thank you. And I'll turn back to the council for ex parte disclosures on, uh, R four and R five.
Staff and applicant.
Bradford, you are?
Great, thank you, Mayor. Um, the applicant on behalf of Crestwood Square LTD has requested major site plan modification to span the outdoor seating dining area from three hundred square feet to one thousand three hundred and twenty square feet at the existing restaurant Duffy's Sports Grill. The property is located at one one nine three five Southern Boulevard within the Crestwood Shopping Center and situated within the general commercial zoning district. This slide illustrates the proposed site plan, um, location in red. This slide illustrates the proposed landscape plan. There will be some, um, sable palms and Christmas palms removed from this, um, area. And the applicant will be placing, uh, shrub material for, for screening of this area. This illustration illustrates the elevations for the proposed covered outdoor seating dining area. The applicant is proposing getting to expand the outdoor seating area in order to improve the overall dining experience for the customers. Also, according to the applicant's justification statements, TVs will be mounted where they are not visible from the outside. So they're, they won't cause distract, distraction in the parking areas. Furthermore, uh, and outdoor furnishings will be stored indoors when not in use. The restaurant's management retains full control of the TV volumes and there are no volume amplifications on any of the TVs. Overall, the proposed site plan improvements meet the village's requirements for this type of use in the general commercial zoning district. Furthermore, the outdoor seating area meets all relevant supplemental regulations of Village Code twenty-six seventy-two for outdoor seating. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this application on October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three and recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. And staff is recommending approval of this application. And I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, this, this picture you have, put it back up, please. Is this, this illustrative or that's what it's going to really look like?
That's going to be it.
It's going to look like? Because it looks, doesn't look much larger than what you have now.
Oh, is it?
Larger. It's a lot, yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot bigger.
It doesn't seem like it, if this is the way it's going to look.
It, it projects towards, excuse me, the parking areas and then it goes the length of the building.
So it gets more length than width. Okay, good. All right, I just wanted to ask that question. Because when I read the, when I read the information and I went, wow, that's a lot more space. Is that going to work?
Yeah, it's deceiving, um, because, you know, it, it is outside and it looks breezy. Um, it's mainly a roof line. So, um, this is a completely outdoor area that we're proposing with you today. So I just want to say, I, is it my turn?
Yes, oh, it's your turn, yes.
I don't want to over, overstep. First of all, I just want to say thanks to staff, um, for all of their assistance through this process. So we, we very much enjoyed working with the village and we're excited to be here. Uh, Duffy's has been here for quite some time now. They have thirty-three stores in Florida, so, uh, our retail are part of the restaurants, so, so they're a pretty known entity. Uh, and this is a way, um, essentially of offering a service that Duffy's can't at this location and can at most of their other locations. And that is when, when a customer comes in and they want to sit outside.
They have the option.
Yep. And right now we have kind of an unused space, uh, like a, there's a grassy knoll, if you will, uh, next to some parking spots. The parking spots aren't changing. We're just utilizing the current grassy knoll that's just kind of has a, has a, um, a little table outside that I think that some customers might go out to, to smoke a cigarette or, or whatever they do. Does anyone smoke these days? I mean, but anyway, um, so, uh, what we're looking for is a real improvement. But before I get into, I'm going to have Tyler run us through a quick presentation that kind of shows you where we're at. And, um, I just want to say congratulations on your building. This is absolutely stunning. How good does this feel? This must feel amazing. And, uh, just in your opening.
I think we need more TV, so I don't know.
Right, and you were talking about, you know, all the agricultural you guys were reminding me of. I'm a proud graduate of Leadership Palm Beach County, class of twenty twenty-two. But, uh, the most powerful class ever. We always have to state our tagline. And Ag Day was by far the most impressive day. You learned so much about what this county does from an economic engine perspective. So it's a very exciting place to be. So it was nice to see your stats getting, getting told. So I'm going to have Tyler Schultz on my team kind of run us through and then I'll stand up for any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Rebecca. Um, good evening, council and staff. It's, it's really wonderful to be here. What a gorgeous space. Um, I'm a project administrator on Rebecca's team, uh, presenting on behalf of the client, uh, Crestwood Square. And want to take you through this presentation, um, to go over the outdoor seating expansion for, um, this location at Duffy's. Um, we're going to compound the two items here on the agenda, both the major site plan amendment and the, uh, architectural, um, aesthetic review. Um, and go through this presentation, um, as one. So the opening here we have to present to you that rendering that you just saw, um, kind of giving an intro to, to what the space will look like. Uh, again, this is, you know, fits in nicely with the aesthetic of the existing facade. Um, and, uh, you know, is meant to provide that outdoor space that this, uh, you know, location of Duffy's seeks. I want to get into the what and whys next. Um, this major site plan amendment is needed, um, because a number of, um, site plan amendments escalated, um, up to a major site plan amendment. Um, it, it's here to meet the need for shelter distancing among the senior population in this community, uh, providing that outdoor space that, you know, the peak season loves. Uh, included here is a, uh, one thousand three hundred and twenty square foot, uh, covered outdoor dining area that will replace the existing undefined area that's there. Um, this will improve the overall dining experience offered at, you know, this location at, at Crestwood Square. So being a good neighbor is a top consideration of this project. Um, want to touch on this. Um, management will be monitoring the sound levels, uh, at all times via the minute noise monitoring system. Um, just to clear that up, this, um, system, you know, I would equate it to, uh, a smoke detector. It's placed in a central location. It's a smart device and it allows management to, you know, keep a pulse on these sound levels at all time. Whether they're on the floor during service or, you know, in the, in the back office doing more administrative work. Uh, you know, once that threshold is reached, gives management a notice and they're able to, um, you know, address it. The measures will be taken to ensure, um, this, this expansion does not disturb, um, the neighboring businesses, any of the residential areas. Um, as touched on, um, before, you know, the, these televisions will be strategically placed under those awnings there. And there are no plans for any additional speakers, um, you know, and out of consideration as well, the furniture, any outdoor furnishings, uh, they'll be, you know, stored indoors when, when not in use. Sound analysis is provided here. And to play some context, um, a comparison location was used, um, you know, with a similar, uh, seating map and, and, and size, um, over in St. Lucy West. Uh, the ambient sounds at the current location here up at Southern Boulevard, um, already exceed, uh, Royal Palm Beach noise ordinance maximums, um, primarily due to the traffic there on Southern Boulevard, those, those passing vehicles.
Traffic, traffic, traffic.
Traffic, traffic, traffic. Um, and, and despite the existing ambient noise, the analysis suggests that any additional noise, uh, from the proposed outdoor dining, um, i- is unlikely uh, to reach, you know, the nasaring businesses, the residential areas right there. Um, you know, and, and we use this compare, comparison location to look and you see that nearly identical, uh, that existing outdoor area in, in St. Lucy West is, um, similar to the findings that the Universal Engineering Services team picked up, uh, during the study regarding ambient noise. Now, want to circle back to this, you know, the course of action here or the plan of action. Um, given, you know, the, uh, monitoring system, what will actually happen? You know, i- if that threshold is then exceeded, uh, what's the plan of action for management's? Um, and, and, you know, there will be, uh, effort then to lower whatever the volume is on the television or the music. Um, you know, management will be asking guests to, you know, keep their voices to a tolerable level. Uh, remind the patrons to stay within those designated areas of the, um, you know, seating area. And then obviously relocate, you know, guests if necessary, um, remove them to the indoor dining, uh, room area. And then closing here, we wanted to finish just with the economic impact and, and what Duffy brings to, you know, this community. Um, you see from twenty twenty-one into quarter three of the, the twenty twenty-three fiscal year, you know, almost half a million dollars paid in, uh, sales taxes. And, uh, you know, this business is keeping people employed. Uh, you see a, a steady rate of hourly employees employed at this location. It, it's a good thing for the community. Um, that kind of takes us through what, what I wanted to cover on my end. Um, I'll bring Rebecca back up for any, any questions you may have. Um, but again, thank you for your time, your consideration and, and thank you for allowing us to be here.
Okay. You want to make additional comments?
Nope, just here for any questions.
Okay. Diane, did we have any prior public comments on agenda item R four?
No, Mayor.
Ray, any hands raised on agenda item R four?
Can't honestly say yes or no because I've lost access to my.
Okay, well hopefully.
They're trying to fix it now.
All right, we'll tell, tell them that we're going to commercial break, but we'll continue with the meeting. I have not received any public comment cards on agenda item R four, but if anyone would like to comment, I would give them that opportunity. Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment on agenda item R four and open up for questions, comments from members on council.
I'll go first. Uh, I think from your presentation, uh, that you had mentioned about the volume on the TVs. But when we spoke earlier, it was that there will not be any sound on the TVs outside. Is that correct?
That is correct. Their sound is off.
Okay, on all those.
It's muted.
Um, good luck telling patrons to keep their voices down. That's really what the noise level is going to generate from. Um, I don't have a concern or anything with the square footage, with the site plan modification that you're asking for. But I did request a hedge to go the height of the canopy area, just on that east side. Yep. Another living wall.
A living breathing wall.
Another breathing wall. To absorb some of that smoke.
So just to be clear, uh, councilwoman, which, which elevation did you ask for that?
Well, we have our, our height for fencing goes up to six feet. However, hedges can go up to eight feet. So if it's possible on the east side of the property to have the hedge go up to eight feet. I see there's a hedge back there. I don't know if that is just decorative or if that's what you intended to be.
We're putting up a hedge right there for the property line. Um, the concern is to put it right up against the space that inhibits airflow. So we do have a solid, uh, six foot buffer along that, um, east facing property line already.
Okay, and then because I know they can go up to eight feet with the hedging, is that residential and commercial also? So can that go up? So we can let that go up to eight feet then? Can we make that in there that it does need to go that high?
Make that a condition of approval.
Okay, thank you.
We're suggesting that be a condition of approval?
I'm asking just because I know what it's like when you get approval and go through and, oh yeah, it's going to take a while to grow. So yes, I just want to make sure that it must maintain that eight feet.
Keith, I guess my question is, does that need to be in a formal condition of approval? So it's documented?
If it's going to be a condition of approval, it needs to be part of the motion, yes.
Okay, so it has to be part of the motion. And you would have to acknowledge that you will agree to that condition.
I have no issue with making the hedge eight feet.
Okay, all right. Uh, who else?
And just, and I did want to just mention too, um, regarding the outdoor space, um, a lot of outdoor spaces have a bar area.
Right.
Which does kind of create that conviviality, you know, just really loud voices and talking over each other. In this space in particular, um, there is no outdoor bar. Um, so we do understand though, voices do raise during natural conversations. However, we're hoping that this is much more of a family oriented space than, than necessarily where, where the folks are, you know, out partying. Typically, they, they like to gather around a bar. At least I do when I am.
I know the layout of Duffy's and they do gather around the bar.
They do, they do.
To, to that, just one question about access to the patio. Is there an access from the outside?
There's only access through the restaurant.
Through the restaurant. Okay, that's good.
It's a solid wall all the way around.
So the idea of, uh, having TVs out there without the sound on is great. But watching a game?
Yeah. Then they have to go inside if they want noise, yeah.
It's going to be a challenge, I think, to, to manage that.
Well, it, it is the policy of the other outdoor areas as well.
Is that right?
Yeah, we do keep our TVs on butts on the other outdoor areas as well. Uh, when you have, you know, if you look at your own chambers here and let's say you had a game on every single screen and you had the volume on, on every single screen. It would be very distracting. So, um, so they do typically, um, during, you know, um, during dinner hours, that kind of thing, do keep the, the muted televisions. But out in the patios, it's always muted. Sometimes they have ambient speakers, um, where they play low music, but in our case. Sometimes they have ambient speakers where they play low music, but in our case, we're not.
Okay, and there will be an alarm to the management that will say, you know, it's getting loud out there.
Yeah, so it actually lets them know. So, it will say, it will actually send them an alarm on their, on the manager's phone.
Okay.
So, wherever the manager is in the house, he then will go out, and he'll make any arrangements that need to be. We're very aware of the concern, and we plan to be an exceptional neighbor.
Thank you.
My only comment would be, I live not too far from where this establishment is, and.
Hope to see you soon.
And I, and you probably will. I was just wondering, how long have you guys been there? Because I do remember there were issues with tenants there before, and it was nothing consistent until finally you guys came in. And it's been, I think it's got to be at least over 10 years.
Yeah.
You guys have been there. I'm not exactly sure, but I was.
I have the facility directors for all of the Duffy's here tonight, so could you answer that?
If he knows. I was just wondering, because, and like I said, you, in my opinion, it's a problem when you have a center, especially a restaurant, that, you know, is turning over every couple of years, and you guys have been consistent, good people in the neighborhood.
Yeah, I was going to say 13, so, yeah, yeah. So, it's been a long term.
Thanks so much.
And we're, you know, my clients are actually Crestwood Square and Southeast Centers who own the entire mall. And so, this is something that Duffy's told us that they wanted. And on behalf of the mall and on behalf of the organizations who own the mall, we're very excited to offer this to them because they are a fantastic tenant. They're fabulous, and they're a really good, really good thing to have in our centers, so we're very happy to offer it to them.
And I agree, and thank you for being such a good member of the community. I really appreciate it. Muted, they are.
Right. Any other questions or comments? Your question?
Nope, I was going to make a motion.
Oh, I'll look for motion.
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number four with the condition that the east hedge maintained at eight feet.
Second.
Is that motion okay, can we wait, stated? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show that the agenda item R four was approved, five zero. Agenda item R five is a public hearing to consider application number two-three-dash-zero-five-nine. The applicant, MPLD Consulting, on behalf of Crestwood Square. It's requesting architectural and aesthetic review approval for covered outdoor seating dining area expansion of an existing restaurant for a property located at 11935 Southern Boulevard. Everyone was already sworn in, I believe, for this item, so refer to your.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Just like the last item, the previous applicant, I'm just going to give P and Z's recommendation, our recommendation, because we've seen the renderings. So, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this application by a vote of five to zero, and staff is recommending approval of this application, and I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Does the applicant want to make any additional comments? Additional comments, or you're okay?
I'm good.
Okay. Diane, do we have any prior public comment on agenda item R five? No? Are you up yet, Ray? Are you still down?
We got him back. Signed off. I didn't lose him.
They found themselves, okay. Oh, it's that time, all right. Okay, I do not have any public comment cards submitted to me on agenda item R five, but if anyone would like to comment, I would love them to come up now. Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment to agenda item R five. There are no comments. Look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show that agenda item R five was approved, five zero. What's your timeline?
Well, thank you so much, immediately. So, the building department will see plans very soon.
They'll get right to work, okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that brings us now to agenda item R six, which is the appointment of two residents to the Education Advisory Board. Mr. Mayor, you're up.
What's, good evening again. Actually, we only have one actual applicant for the two vacancies that we have, so we're going to continue to advertise the remaining vacancies. But I would make a motion to appoint Nisha Mitchell to a regular seat with the term expiring 2025.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show agenda item R six was approved, five zero, for these appointments. And agenda item R seven is an appointment of one regular member to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term ending in March 2025, and two alternate members to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term ending in March 2025.
Okay, before I, before we get to the appointment, I wanted to bring this idea up to the council and our legal team. When we have our appointments, the, one of the rules is excused absences, unexcused absences, and the most you can have is three. On the excused list, and Mitty's going to keep me honest here, about the six reasons why an excused absence would happen, right? It's court appearance, jury duty, health of yourself or immediate family member, or a death in the immediate family. There's one more, but I can't remember many.
It's if you're out doing work for the advisory board off-site during a regular meeting, but specifically for that board.
So, one of the things that I asked this afternoon was, what about if you're called away for military duty? And it's short-term, not long-term, but short-term, a few months. Would that be acceptable as an excuse, acceptable excused absence? And how do we?
That's a good question. The challenge, though, is when you get called to active duty, if you're a part of reserve component, and you get called to active duty, you have no control over how long you're going to be gone. That will be in your orders. So, to set a predetermined, oh, if you're only going this long, then it's okay, as opposed to you. And sometimes when you're deployed, that could be extended, you know, through circumstances being in your control. That happens more than people would realize.
Sure.
So, I agree with the notion that you don't want to penalize someone for serving their country. So, Keith, you want to comment on that? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm used to the old mic where I could just, Keith, you want to comment on that?
Short-term, maybe there's two or three months at a time.
Summer camp kind of a thing is a two-week thing, so.
Well, okay, she said deployment, but, yeah, okay. You want to comment on that?
Just that we would need to define what short-term means.
That's what I'm saying, define it.
My thought from what Jan said is, because the rule is three excused absences, correct? Well, to me, you know, half a year is kind of much, so maybe four or five because of deployment, you're not kicked out after three. To me, that would make sense. But, I mean, we have to decide how, you know, comfortable we are. How many, how many meetings can somebody miss before, you know, it's really undermining the process by having someone not there? And I do think if you are in active military service, you know, three months may be a little short. I don't know, going more than six months, I would agree with. But I think for that particular excused absence, we might want to go somewhere between six and three.
I think if we were to put a provision in which, I think is a great concept, actually, I'm glad you put it up, to support our military personnel. But if we were to put something in place, it should be outside of the three, the number of absences. It should be, if you're called on military duty and you have orders that support that, it'll be a window of time. Now, should it be a six-month window? Should it be a nine-month window? A one-year window? That is, I think, would have to be determined. But I think it should be, because it's military service, outside of the normal reasons for the three, the three absences, well, if we're going to do that.
So, I'm familiar with the reserves, so you're two weekends a year, and those are very specific. Are there other instances where you would be called away for a short-term and not an undefined?
Yeah, just to give you a little history, one of the outcomes that happened after the First Gulf War was the, the use of the reserve component working with the active component was completely changed. And one of the rules they put in place that individual, individuals with a specific MOS could be mobilized and called back to duty, and they could be, you know, mobilized for as long as a year, all right? Now, they usually try to make it less than a year because if you're on duty for more than a year, some other benefits may kick in. But it really changed the landscape for how the reserve component was being deployed. So, that's very, you'd be surprised. A lot of members in the reserve component, almost every other year, they're called and do at least a six-month, and many times a nine, 10-month tour.
Well, I think then the other part is, is if you limit it to a certain amount of time. So, you meet 12, you have 12 meetings a year.
Correct.
So, if you're already missing three or four, I guess my concern is, is it's starting to prohibit the work of the counts of the board because you are short-staffed? I mean, you do have alternates, but.
That's one of the reasons for the oftenness.
Right, so I understand that, but that's what I'm saying, though. But if you're, if you're holding a spot for somebody that is only there four times instead of 12 times, that's where it comes into. So, I don't know, I do understand that as a reason for an excused absence, and maybe that is still the three, because then you can kind of gauge where it's going, and maybe make that person the alternate instead of, this way they don't have to resign from the board, but then they're not called on unless.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. That's another way of doing it, okay?
And what I'm hearing from everybody is yes. Okay, so it's added. Next thing I hear is, how many, how many times would be okay out of 12 meetings? Right now, there are three excused, so now that, once it's added, it automatically have three. Are we comfortable with more than three? How many more than three? I think if you go more than three, because the alternates do attend the meetings, and they do keep up to date with what's going on from meeting to meeting, then I think maybe you would, maybe you would limit it to the number of people that would be in active duty that would be subject to deployment. So, because you wouldn't want your whole board being, potentially being deployed. So, that, so somewhere between the five, there's seven total, five on and two alternates, somewhere between one and seven would be an acceptable number, your maximum amount of people that are in. We're talking to somebody in active duty and his deployment, his or her deployment. So, if you want a military person on, adding to the list, I hear yes. Second would be, do we allow more than three? How many more than three? I'm hearing, I'm hearing three to six. And then the second thing I think you ought to address is, how many people with active duty would you want to have on that's subject to that? I think you would want to limit that to something less than two, or two or less.
Okay, that doesn't sound unreasonable.
That all sounds good.
And I think you get your continuity from that.
And just to add to that, if a person is deployed, by definition, you should re-designate them perhaps as an alternate, and then designate one of your alternates as, which is, by function, you're going to do that, but that kind of puts it into, yeah, a different structure, so to speak.
The only thing is, I would keep it at the three, just because then it's consistent with everybody else. That's my only.
If you keep it at three, though, that's, it's not going to work for them, because they're going to exceed the three.
But then, then they don't really need to be on the board, serving.
No, I don't want to penalize, I don't want us to penalize our military force.
I'm not penalizing, what I'm saying is that we do, we ask all of our, well, we ask all of our residents to do that. What if I have a sickly child, and I can't make four meetings because my child's sick? Do you still want me on the board because now work can't be completed?
Yeah, if you make a case, an appeal, they're saying no.
No, three and 75%, if you can't make that, you're off.
Right, so that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but what I'm saying to you is, if you say the number is three, anyone who gets deployed, they're going to be off, because they're not going to be gone for just three months. That's the reality, okay? And it's a problem. We have a, in our, in our military structure today, you know, keeping the force levels up to where we need them to be. This is one of the issues that they deal with is, yeah, well, yeah. Anyway, how do we, where do we go from here with this?
I have two, two other questions, one for Mitty and Keith, about Planning and Zoning Commission itself. And so, having, having been the liaison for a number of years, I think that after four, you really start to, you've missed significant information.
Four meetings.
After four meetings.
Oh, you're going to be out of the loop.
Yeah. And so, I wouldn't go, I wouldn't go more than four. But I'd love to hear your opinion.
So, one thing I just want to remind the council is that your, this, this policy that you all adopted, it applies not only to Planning and Zoning Board, but to all of your other citizen advisory boards. And just remember that some of those don't meet each month, so that's why Ray, Ray brought up the 75%. So, for Planning and Zoning, it's pretty straightforward. They meet every month. So, the three is typically what applies, but the 75% applies more to the Education Advisory Board because they don't meet for 12 months. So, with P and Z, I think your point is well-taken that keeping up with what the projects that are coming through is important, and a prolonged absence would be maybe detrimental, but certainly it's the council's pleasure to, but you might just want to consider, if you choose to modify, making it apply to all of your boards so that you're not creating an instance where somebody's never at the Education Advisory Board, right?
So, going back to what Ray was saying, so it sounds like we seem to be in agreement that including that as an excused absence is a viable thing to do. Right now, we're saying, it sounds like, let's, let's leave it at three, and let's see how it goes. Yeah, okay.
My thought, I, I mean, I don't know if this is creating more issues, but I heard someone say about, and is it possible, we have alternates on all of our boards, correct? If someone gets deployed and, you know, give them the option, okay, you're deployed, we understand, thank you for serving our country. You still want to be on the board, we will temporarily put you in an alternate status, and then one of the alternates can take their spot while they're deployed, and when they come back, we can just put them back in the spot. I mean, so that they're not, you know, losing out or as we.
Well, but by function, that happens anyway. That's the reason for the alternates.
Right, except for after three, they're out.
The alternates have the same attendance requirements, right? So, it's, yeah, they have, they have, they have to be there.
Well, then that's why I would up the, up the, at least like Jan said, to four. If you're out for four for deployment, maybe five.
Four months, you're saying?
As long as they're not one of the, I would, I guess you don't have to do the whole, the alternate thing then.
No, because by function, that's what they do.
Someone will step in and do the job while they're not there.
The way, the way the committees operate, especially P and Z, if the night of the meeting, they find out one of the regular members isn't going to be there, they have alternate one and alternate two. They step right up, they're joining, they're part of that meeting, so.
So, Mitty, is it possible to keep it where, yes, I think we're all in agreement that this is a viable excuse, or to be added to the list of excusable absences? Could we keep it the same where it is the three? Because I believe that's what it says right now, is it three and 75%? So, to keep it that way. Is it possible in the event that we be, that we come to a situation where that would be, you know, it's going to be meeting number five, but they're going to be back next week, and then they're done forever? You know, could we then take it a case-by-case, or does it have to be?
Can't do a case-by-case, yeah.
Yeah, because this is a formal policy that you adopt as a, as a formal policy, so it should be specified in the policy.
Okay.
Another question. So, if we have a member who's missed unexcused absences, are they, are they in the future allowed to reapply to the boards and committees again?
They are.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right now, there are no rules that say.
Okay.
With silent, right?
Yep, and I think that's happened before, at least.
It did happen before.
If someone were to be deployed longer than the three meetings.
They can reapply.
They can reapply, and, okay.
Yes, so.
Seems to be the answer.
All right, so I think we're saying, three months or four months?
At the same, we're just adding that one additional reason.
Okay, and I would like us, if we need to down the road, to revisit this, okay? If we should. If we should. I mean, based on whatever experiences we may see out of this, so. Okay.
Thank you very much.
So what do we need to do? Need to do a formal vote?
So the, the policy document that we're talking about was approved by motion. I would like it to be an agenda item. I mean, you, you've had pretty full discussion today, so, but I would like to bring it back as an amendment, an amended policy to your next council meeting.
Okay, so can we, we'll have that ready for the next council meeting?
Yes, for, for sure.
Okay, good. Everyone okay with that? Pointees.
Thank you.
And thanks for bringing that up, thank you.
Of course. So now I would like to make a motion to move and appoint Kamar Williams, who currently serves as alternate number one, to the regular seat with a term expiring in March 2025, and move and appoint Andrew Alba to the alternate number one seat and Jonathan Dickinson to the alternate number two seat with terms expiring March 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show that agenda item R seven was approved for the appointments, five zero. If there are no further questions, comments, we have no further business this evening before this council. I want to wish everyone a very happy and blessed Thanksgiving. Can't believe it's next week, right, next Thursday? Wow. We stand adjourned, thank you.